Okay, we will call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, December 13th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. Can you get a roll call, please?
Yeah.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Brian Hanks.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Barb, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us into the public hearings. The first public hearing is development agreement with Evy and Seth Peterson. We'll go ahead and open that public hearing. Candidate will receive any comment?
No comments on that.
And is there anyone here to speak on the public hearing for the development agreement with the Petersons? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Moving to resolution number 33, 2021, 2022. Resolution approving development agreement with Evy and Seth Peterson, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Move to approve. Second. Sandy and Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us into development with JLA LLC and Kathy Kokler. We'll open that public hearing on proposed development agreement with JLA LLC and Kathy Kokler. Candidate will receive any comment? So anyone here to speak in the public hearing for JLA LLC and Kathy Kokler? Close that public hearing, move into resolution number 34, 2021, 2022. Resolution approving development agreement with JLA LLC and Kathy Kokler, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Move to approve. Second. Dane and Luke, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us into item C, amend Nevada City Code of Ordinance, Chapter 3, Precincts and Wards. This is the public hearing for re-precincting based on the census. So open up the public hearing on the precincts. Candidate, do you receive any comments regarding precincts?
No.
Is there anyone here to speak in the public forum regarding precincts? Okay, then, close that public hearing and move into ordinance number 10, 2021, 2022. An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance says of the city of Nevada, Iowa, 2006 by repealing Chapter 3, Precincts and Wards, Section 3.01, Division of the Precincts and Wards, and readopting said chapter and section as revised for the purpose of reprecincting in response to the 20th census and establishing an effective date first reading. Move to approve. Second. Dane and Barb, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Okay, that is approved. Takes us to three, requirements of state ordinance number 10, 2021, 2022, second and third readings to be suspended per Section 380.3 Code of Iowa and approve the second and third reading. Ratings of ordinance number 10, 2021, 2022. Move to approve. Second. Luke and Sandy, discussion on that? Seeing none, council please vote. Okay, that's approved. Takes us into resolution number 35, 2021, 2022. A resolution to approve the memorandum of agreement with Story County for combining census blocks. Move to approve. Brian, Barb, discussion? Okay, seeing none, council please vote.
I missed it from the...
Okay, so the title's going to be wrong, but that one is approved and then we'll do the other one separately. So that moves us into D, which is recodification that Nevada City Code of Ordinance is 2021. And before moving to that public hearing, we'll talk a little bit about process because I know that's what most people are here tonight for. So staff has been working on going through together on some different issues and things in the community and has put together a proposal of ordinance changes. Also, there's been changes over the last 15 years that need to get to the state and the final document. So the last full update was 2006. So there's a couple purposes behind it. And so today is the public hearing to take input on those proposals for council to consider. My recommendation to them is going to be to schedule a work session in June specifically to take that feedback and incorporate it and then do the first reading pursuant to that. So that'll be up to them whether they do the first reading tonight or whether they choose to wait on that, but that will be my recommendation to council. So just wanted to kind of set the stage on the goal tonight is to get all the feedback about different considerations that may need to be considered by council for changes to those proposals. So since there's a number of folks here, we'll probably go with about two minutes per person up there on these so you can give us your thoughts on that. And if someone has made a similar thought, you can say, I agree with what they said. You don't necessarily have to reiterate everything as well. So we also do have some folks online on Zoom that we're going to be trying to look in as well. So just kind of go through things one by one. And first person we'll call out, so we'll add you, go to the podium, you'll state your meaning and address for the record. But first person we'll pull out of here is Mike Potter.
Glad I sat close enough so I didn't have to walk very far. Mike Potter, 1071 T here in Nevada. I just have two real brief points that I would like to bring out to you. As a fellow business owner of over 40 years here in Nevada, I would like to point out one thing with respect to the new regulations that applies not only to retail but to rental properties. And that is, of course, that in case you are unaware, increased costs to retail business will also get transferred on to the end user, ultimately the rental property renter. So I'd like you to keep that in mind in case you hadn't thought of that. Any of the increased costs in business ownership always get transferred to the end user. It's just kind of the cost of doing business. Brian, you would understand that very well. Second, I have done the volunteer chaplain at Story County Jail for a number of years. And I have seen here in Nevada, we don't have homeless shelter. And I have transported a number of people from Story County Jail to various places around Story County because, number one, there's no homeless shelter here in Nevada. Number two, we've had to find inexpensive places for them to stay for short periods of time until they could get back on their feet again, whether they were going home or not. So I would like you to keep that into consideration, that there's a group of people that are not homeowners, that are renters, that are going to still need, after you make all of these recommendations, are going to need an inexpensive place to live, whether they are from Story County, resident of Story County, or whether they're just passing through. So, thank you.
Counsel, any people, Mr. Potter? And we'll hop over to Zoom. None of these, either of them are there?
No, she was there earlier, but now she keeps coming in and out. I don't know.
There were, looked like there were possibly two.
One of them.
Okay, sounds good. I'll hold on to those. So we'll move on. It looks like it's Chris, maybe Seifkin, something, might be misreading the last name, but whatever you had in the microphone and provide your name and address as well for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Seifkin. I actually represent my parents, who are no longer, they're not here, but currently. Gary Mary Van Seifkin, who have a number of rental properties here in Nevada. And I know that they've asked me to speak on their behalf tonight in regards to this whole ordinance with the idea of adding different structures to rental properties in order to make it safer for our renters, et cetera. We'll say that from their perspective, they're gifted at this point. However, I would also say that doing this isn't necessarily the safest thing for our renters. It is an opportunity for people to make their own decisions on where they want to sleep, where they want to be. We actually started looking at the cost, et cetera. As this gentleman has actually, as she has already said, he will be transferred on to our renters. And that cost is not fair to them. We do have good landlords here in Nevada who do, which we try to do right by our renters and do a good job in that regards. But that cost is at a great, I mean, you're going to see a great loss of very good people, good, very good renters in this town, which I'd hate to see, you know, go to the wayside and not be under consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Similarly said, it's getting this year pretty expensive to be poor. Everything's going up, and we all know it. But the ones at the bottom, the stress is a little bit higher proportion for them. Whatever this adds as far as effort or cost to get passed on. And I realize we haven't talked about what the permit applicateness is going to be. Maybe it'll be nothing. But in our case, we manage property for several people. We charge for going around. There will be a cost for some landlords that gets passed on. And a few times through the 41 years I've been here, you've heard enough what extra regulation does. And I understand what the point is, let's make it safer. About 10 years ago, I met with Bill DiO when Oliver was looking at state trade licensing. And my concern at the time was it makes homeownership a lot more expensive. His concern was it made things safer. And we are at the point where hiring and bidding trades expensive. It's, it, someone really used to say to me that I should be fired because it's a license to steal. I mean, it was, it was a joke, but it's a, it's a gatekeeper policy. Couple of years after that, Hurricane Katrina, I had a bunch of mobile homes that got transported all across the United States. And I'm not boring with mobile homes, but they got a map underneath instead of a regular box that shows different zones they can go in and the windshield zone they can go in. And they got moved to different places. Some of them was up. There was a call, we got to do something, you know? We got people that bought mobile homes, a bad function. And now there's not very many mobile home installers. And I, and if you pay attention, people that want to move a mobile home can't find an installer. It's prohibitively expensive to move a home anymore. Trucking regulated very hard and, you know, topics today's moves, it's, it's at a crisis point. It's, I understand what the regulations are for. I understand it's for safety. Everybody's hearts are in the right place on this. So whatever's decided, but there is going to be unintended consequences. And that's going to be a higher cost of living for those that can afford it the least. Any questions?
Andy, I'll ask you and anybody who wants to address it when they speak. We have properties in our town, and I've seen them myself, and I don't know who the owners are of any places I've been to that don't meet a lot of the code that we're talking about here, which could just be some bad apples. I don't know. What are some potential solutions that you think would work that you would be willing to accept or that you think would be good? You've been on both sides of this argument before, so.
Am I going to run into a two-minute time limit? And if I'm answered questions, all right.
My two minutes.
So this comes up a lot. The answers I have are going to be really boring because if you want to have an answer that everybody is going to say, we accomplished this, and we did something, they have it for you. We got sent back to solve a main street parking problem. And we met and met and met and met and met, and to everybody's great frustration, we came back, so we can't solve it. We, we don't have a solution. I don't have a solution for you tonight because what's the answer? Medical dependency support, safety nets for people at the bottom, better education, better jobs. Not going to solve that real well in 15 minutes of discussion tonight. But when you say there's bad apples, there's stuff that you can tell them. But the problem is that, the reason... I was at a college forum with Newhood, like for the Des Moines Research. It was pretty unpleasant. She'd written article after article after article about how mobile home residents were captives. She was trying to make a point for those some people that had bought mobile homes without home inspections and had, had paid $800 for them and lived there for months and they were in disrepair and they couldn't move them. I said, man, please don't get this, this is that they live somewhere for six months for $800. So that's the problem. If somebody's best solution is they can live somewhere for six months for $800, and it's not good, or they're going to be homeless. That's a choice, it's taken away unless there's another choice. You can have subsidized housing, you have no income housing. If your housing that's removed is removed as a choice. I can give kind of a concrete example, not call them out. I, two and a half years ago, we did some downtown walkthroughs, right? After Shagmark. And one of them was nabbed by, I think, I mean, consumers not sold that apartment up above, right? Unless they can get a second address. And for two and a half years, they haven't been able to provide a second address. So the residents up there are aware that they're the less than ideal situation, but it's the best solution they can come up with for it. And we can pave the way, and they're safer. I think the cheapest apartments being put up, they're about $1,700 a month. And I'm probably going up with increased insurance. Not, not to call you out, Karen, but... Don't look, don't look. You're building. I mean, you don't even have any of it. A lot of us talk, and our costs are going up. Our costs are very far up, going up, same with everybody else. Anything that we have shared utilities on, you know, I've got a building with a boiler. I don't, my utility is going up. I've got a few tenants that have been with me for 21 years. Less than ideal. But if they had a better solution, whether the free market works, they'd move. We can't raise the rent unless we can get around it where our costs are passed down. If we got no tenants, we don't raise rent. We're going to be raising rent. We, we have to. And a solution, you know, as much as it sounds, we're signing year leases right now because everything's coming in. Our insurance is going up, our utilities are going up, building materials are going up, gas is going up, everything's going up. So, so property taxes is, I mean, it's, at least the stuff is worth more, property tax are coming up. If it's a trap for us, sign a one-year lease with somebody because we'll be stuck honoring it. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a volatile time right now. I'm glad you asked, I gave you a little more, two minutes. I don't have a solution for you because I don't have a solution in 15 minutes tonight to make a decision. On the short term, it doesn't get any better by taking away choices because the residents can make a choice. I, you see it on the news, say, this isn't good, this isn't good, and this is good, and I can't afford to move. So if the landlord corrects the situation and they raise the rent and the person can't afford to move. When you put it in the words, I mean, it doesn't make it sound better. It sounds pretty mercenary. I, I don't have it. I don't have a solution for you, other than any of our tenants. It's, you can't get rid from a storm. We've all got pictures of places that were destroyed on tenants on the way out. And if I can't find where their job is, I can't recover any money. They keep the deposit, doesn't come through, taken care of. The damage, re-advertising, it's sitting on empty apartment for months, sitting on empty apartment for months, that's the deposit. That's, that's, it's not explaining that you can have a deposit. There's no money that goes from a deposit. Everybody, it's, it's a joke, landlords keep the deposits. We give the deposit back anytime we want. We want 30-day notes, we want a clean apartment. I don't have time to go clean a paint apartment, tear up carpet. I have another cover. I'm stuck honoring whatever lease I've got. I'm stuck honoring leases that weren't valid. There's no guarantee of getting paid. I'm just sucking out through this whole thing, that tenants could stay there, no guarantee of getting paid. We don't want to evict, there's nothing in for evict. We, we want to do business for our tenants. We want our tenants to have jobs, be able to pay. We want it to work out because that's how we get paid. The tenant skips out, we have to find them, they have to have a job. We have to have them keep the job long enough to garnish them. And it used to be we could attach a judgment in the Richmond same court case. Now we go to court and evict, and then if we can find them, go to court for judgment. And we don't ever get any judgments. What's, what keeps the landlord honest? The fact that we have no recourse against the tenants. The tenants have all the controls. If they're not happy, they move. I mean, past two minutes, must pass to five minutes, you gave me on the sheet of paper. Be careful if you ask me any more questions, I'll keep talking. Dr. Blake?
So, thank you. Okay, any of the Zoom folks back?
Alicia is on.
Okay.
I've got a lot worth to talk.
So Alicia Edson on Zoom will be allowed to talk? Does she can unmute herself and shut the council?
Okay. And so I was talking about the proposed ordinance about parking in the yards. And my concern as a homeowner is that we can, well, personally, we have three vehicles. We have three vehicles, a, two 12-foot trailers, one of them which my husband uses for business. We have been looking in the city of Nevada to find a spot for us to be able to rent for his business. He does mobile detailing. So currently, his trailer is sitting in our yard. It's sitting in our side yard. We don't have the option to park on the street or keep moving the trailer. We have one vehicle that sits next to our driveway. Because if we do put the trailer in our driveway, it doesn't always work lovely. And I guess I'm thinking about, you know, our neighbors who have their camper. And our personal camper is actually stored somewhere else. I guess I really struggle with not being able to park things on our own property if that is the only spot that we have at the time. In our backyard, our kayak trailer, which sits back there, is not in anyone's way. It sits back by our trees, back by a wood pile. I guess I don't believe it is an ice door, such as some other ones that are in, in town. And I guess I just don't understand the, the idea behind it. There are a lot of people with campers. We like to take those out, we like to go, to go places so that they're being moved. And thinking about how it would be enforced. We don't even park one of our vehicles on the street because our neighbor parks on the street every single day. It got to a point where he didn't move his vehicle for months. And then we had to ask someone to come check it out. And then they spoke with him. It wasn't just, hey, it's in the way, we're just going to give a ticket. But it is over and over, like I, I would like to know how it's going to be enforced. What happens to our neighbor who is storing somebody's camper, has a vehicle that doesn't run, but yet I know is not, does not have the financial means to do other things on their property, much less bring in concrete or rock to be able to put there. And so I guess I'm just, I am definitely opposed to some of the wording that is currently in or being proposed.
Good back. And is Alyssa Weerson, I don't see her in here. Is she on Zoom? Oh, there you are. I'm behind you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alyssa Weerson, 22894 Walnut Circle here in Nevada. I thought about this a lot over the weekend. I went through the rental code tip last night, stayed up late going through it. And I just, I put some thoughts together. So when I think about our slogan we have around town, Nevada Nice. When you think of these words, you are thinking of a welcoming, compassionate, respectful, empathetic, and agreeable community. I think we can agree that the slogan is here because we want to perceive ourselves this way and surround ourselves with others of the like. We are a small community that has a lot to offer. We keep this in our mind as I continue and work through some of my thoughts that I have. When I was reading through this code, I wondered to myself if anyone that proposes this code has ever had rental property. If they have went through a destroyed apartment and thought, you know, this was something that was enjoyable to a landlord or something that was a glamorous lifestyle. The deposit doesn't even come close to helping with even minor damages that you can think of. An example would be, one time I just had a flea infestation from a pet that they had. That cost me $350 to eradicate because it took three times to get rid of the fleas. That's maybe half of a deposit. I can't rent it while it's flea infested, so I'm losing rent as well. I have lots of other very detailed examples like that, but I'm not going to go into detail. I'm also taking on costs of water, electric, gas, trash, et cetera during this time. These changes that you're imposing undoubtedly will affect our lives as we conduct business differently. It will affect our tenants as well as we're wanting to, we're wanting to rent here are subject to background checks that are disposable to the city. How that's going to affect them, I will not know. But it is also promoting discrimination and raising the rent, a direct result of increasing homelessness, homelessness population. A landlord can't afford to get their permit revoked and not accept rent and wait for changes to be made. I know that there was one section in there that if a tenant complains about something that they need to be fixed, we have seven days to ratify, to correct it to the tenant's approval. Not to the city, not to the landlord, to the tenant's approval. Most of rental property in this town are owned by hardworking, middle-class citizens, not large businesses or corporations that can absorb these costs. So I want to circle back to the Nevada Nice statement that I made earlier. I'm not opposed to a rental code. I, but I do want this to be approached in a different manner as one you would want to approach to your fellow neighbor. If we could approach this similarly to Brett, like how you were speaking to earlier as maybe a work session and reworking some of this stuff. Finiting the details of this rental code. So I would like you to listen to the citizens' comments tonight. And I would like you to work through some of those thoughts together. And hopefully we can have some really good work sessions to create something that's enjoyable for everybody in the town. Thank you.
Okay, and those were all the cards I have, but we'll do a last call in case there's anyone out there that would like to address the council in the hearing. Shane?
13.56 Street. I too have spent a lot, a lot, a lot of time reading through this and trying to make sense of it. And it wasn't just the rental portion of it that kind of got me here tonight. here tonight. Um, but a lot of the rental stuff with the background checks and other things that were going along with it, it looks, it almost looks to me as though I am being charged with now policing my own properties. And if I do not police my own properties, I can lose my right to rent my properties. That was one of the things that I saw in there, I mean, I've got classes I've gotta take now. I don't know what those cost, I've gotten, I, I presume I'm gonna be paying for these inspection fees. I, I, I'm guessing there's gonna be some sort of city-approved software to, to contain all of this information for everybody to look at it, well. Where do those costs go? I mean, I know, I know the big thing in the world right now is to eat the rich and everything, but if we can scale this back to just Nevada, as a property owner, now I'm the rich guy. And there ain't much left on me, I mean, I could lose a couple, but there's, I mean, there's not left, anything left to me once, you know, all these fees and uh, other things that go on with that. The only place they go is onto the tenant, so now, you know, we, we've had to raise rents over the last year several ti- or not several times, substantially on, on quite a few tenants, and you know, what do they do, like, you know, Andy said earlier, that they're gonna move? I don't know, that, what are you, and what are you gonna do when we remove all of our, you know, quote, lower-income housing? When, when there is no more low-income housing, what do we do then, raise taxes again, create another organization to provide, or provide uh, places to live for people that can't afford to live? Just seems like a spiraling problem to me. I think most of these guys out here that have places do try to do the right thing. I'm sure everybody has their horror stories, I'm sure that everybody has gone head-to-head with a tenant or a landlord and been upset about it, but at the end of the day, I'm just trying to put food in front of my kids. And that's one place where I don't mess around. So that's all I got, if you got any questions or whatever, but. Also, what do we have against golf balls? That was one that really got me there, what do we, who hurt you guys?
Golf balls.
Yeah, you're not allowed to hit golf balls in town. And you, and, and then it says you can't fish, but then you can fish according to the DNR standard, I don't.
You probably don't wanna hit golf balls in town if, with the driver, because it'll hit a house, right?
Harrington's pretty wide open, I, most people have the sense to not be whacking balls at houses or greeners.
Rules were written for that one person, I didn't hit them out.
I'm just gonna address that one person, I mean, if a guy wants to take out and pitch a couple balls around at the football field, he's not, he's not hitting houses, I don't know.
I don't know if that was gonna change or is.
It looked like it was a new one, it was underlined, I believe it was a new one.
And it might have been renumbering one, so.
Might have been renumbering, because it was already in there.
There were a lot where that was just renumbered, and that would have.
It was really hard to follow.
Yeah.
And, I mean, since we only got it, what, late Friday afternoon, it's, it's been hard to get through all of that since late Friday afternoon.
But that'd be said, if it's a code, then folks think, that's why we won't do this process, so it's not limited just to proposed changes. Probably bring some attention to things that were there that people didn't even know were in there, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing with my, my pickup, I mean, I, there's something in there about you can't have over a one-ton vehicle unless it's a semi parked on the city streets. So what do we have against my, my F-550, it looked just exactly like a one-ton pickup. But now I'm not allowed to park it on the street.
No, that's been that way, that wasn't a change.
It wasn't a change.
But I agree, that's one of those, I think we need.
You know, bigger trucks, you know, and most of them are the.
I'm saying that every truck I own violates that law.
Exactly. But who knows, if you enforce this stuff, it, it seems open to a lot of selective enforcement, as I have seen before.
I think that's part of it, Shane, that we have to address a lot of the stuff, not just the changes.
Yeah.
I think there's some parts that I even read, reading through this, that weren't underlined, that weren't changed. But when you go back and reread it, it's like, really? You know, we need to address that.
Well, and part of what brought me here tonight is I was under the impression that we were going to blanket pass some of this stuff tonight without really much discussion. And so that's why I'm here, I, I'd like to see if we're gonna be doing things, you know. I haven't been invited to have it put on any of this rental code, I mean, I don't know who else might have been at the conference table when we were putting some of this rental code stuff together, I'm not opposed to a rental code. I'm not, I, you know, but it'd be nice if we could start with some, some basic safety stuff, you know, we could have s- make sure our smoke detectors work, make sure you know, that the railings are on the front steps, you know, things like, I can live with that, I mean, and, and we can, we can move on from there. I don't think anybody would disagree with having some basic safety items. You know, I had a tenant in a brand-new apartment called the fire department to come out to check their, their smoke detectors, I had brand-new, hardwired smoke detectors in that apartment. Five of them, I think it was, they took them all out, replaced them all with battery detectors, now, well, how did, who does that help?
Anyone else for the public hearing?
Do I have you up there?
Mine's, there isn't a microphone, yeah, sorry.
Supersede the state code?
Well.
Because the Iowa rental code was set up through, wasn't it?
The, the landlord law that you're talking about is the, the protections between a landlord and a ten- tenant, so nothing that the city does can supersede, uh, what's in our state code or any federal code. So this is something, this is a, a different slant on that, this is the regulation to make sure that it's habitable for the people that are living there.
Okay. Andy?
I, I do have a question on, on that point. That's a part of it. Then that's the right to keep me out of their park. The only recourse I have to do with it, as far as I know, if, if I give twenty-four hours to knock on the door, they don't let me in, I'm not going in. So we have inspectors, so we set it up twenty-four hours advance to put the note on. If a tenant borrows the inspector, what's the city recourse, if I lie to them for that, I'm I'm cited for it for them not letting in, then I have to evict the tenant to get us in?
No, it wouldn't, I, I, that would not come back on you, that would go through our, the city's policing powers for the city to have access to the property.
So you'd get a warrant enter there.
Yeah, and if we had to do it administratively, we would do it that way. So.
Okay. Yeah, because I can even give, I, I read that. It's certainly a little, if we go to do inspection, I, I've had a couple of events that do not want people in their place, I would not allow this or whatever, and you work around this, I, I hate to lose a rental license, because I'm not allowed to inspect.
Any other comment on, on hearing? Sir, can head on up?
Eric, uh, Gabriel from, uh, six-thirty-nine N Avenue. Uh, a couple of comments, um, and that is with our experience, I've tried to kind of follow the bank as far as when they talk about, uh, well, I should start this by saying affordable housing. Which you can't put those two words together in any sentence and make any sense today. It just doesn't make sense, because it doesn't exist. But anyway, um, we try to follow the bank when they talk about having the, your housing be twenty-five to thirty percent of your gross income. Well, a thousand dollars rent, which is, I'm certainly higher than than what we're, a lot of the rent is, uh, basically means a fifty to sixty thousand dollar income, gross income with utilities to stay there. So any kind of rent less than a thousand dollars, to me, makes no sense to anybody, so my point being to saddle landlords or owners to have any kind of an extra expense, because we're not making a ton of money at a thousand dollars, because our payment is what it is, it's all relative. But that also brings to the point of, I know we're running wild about the capitalist system today and the free enterprise and all that, but you know, when you have a rental property, you generally involve the bank. And so when you involve the bank, you involve the appraiser. And with that, then you also involve the insurance man. Why would that, because people take care of this business, because if your house is falling down and it's not safe for the unit, your insurance company will say, I can't insure you anymore. They don't have to be pulled by an outside party to, to not do this, it takes care of itself. If, if it's not fit to live in, people won't live in it. So it's worthless, so there's an incentive to make it be safe if we can afford to. But five, six, seven hundred dollar rent, there's no answer for that, because the expenses of everything today, um, rebuilt a while back, and, uh, between one duplex and the second duplex, the heating and cooling costs went up six thousand dollars in three or four months. So these days particularly are a bad time to say, let's add. But I'm just really big on the entities out there, the insurance companies, the banks, the appraisers, the architects, the whoever, and the tenants, and the landlords who are involved in this and watch it every single day. And if it's not to fit, live, to fit the unit, they won't live there. So there's an incentive to keep it, and it's not a punishment incentive, it's a it's a free enterprise incentive, so, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, last call.
Just one thing that I haven't heard yet, I was kinda, I'm surprised, and just wanted to bring it up. And I'd just like to echo what everybody else has said, uh, Gem Stage, six-three-four, D Avenue. And, uh, I don't have a lot of property, but I know some local landlords, and I like the fact that it's local. And just I'll jump to a kind of quick example, there's a place down around my, uh, uh, from my house that I think it's, I wrote it down, yeah, six-twenty-five D Avenue. And years ago, it was sold, um, it's no longer owned locally, it was sold with an outfit I believe it was called Yamas Realty, out of Angon. And sometimes at least four times, hardwired smoke detectors went off in four blocks for like twenty-four hours, so just go. Can't get a hold of people, can't get a hold of land, uh, you just can't get a hold of anybody. And, you know, I think more and more is gonna happen, more and more, uh, uh, of that kind of thing is gonna happen, if Nevada ends up being owned by places that's demure, out of state, you know, places that are profit-driven, that's it, that's all we're gonna look at, and so, thank you.
Yeah. Hey. Any last comment? Thank you. For the public hearing, um, I do wanna thank everybody for coming, uh, we do truly appreciate the input, it's very important to hear from everybody. I appreciate everybody's respectful discourse this evening on that. The process, regardless of what council chooses to do, isn't over yet, because any ordinance change requires three readings. There will continue to be opportunities for feedback, so, back to Luke's question, I would encourage anyone who has specific comments about some of the wording, or things that you would like to see different on either the changes or what was Mr. Heinz mentioned, old code. Um, please feel free to send that in, it's easiest, you get it to Karen, because she can compile it in one packet for us, but you get it to any of us, we'll get it to her, and it'll end up in there as well, so that'll be how feedback will continue to be gathered, and I know Jordan had something too, I almost forgot that.
Yeah, uh, i- if you guys have any questions or anything, please call, please email. Uh, Ryan is our, the planning zone guy, he's great, he will, he's actually sitting back there with the bucket hat. Um, but if you guys have any questions, call us, stop in, you know, email us, that way we can help you out with any of the questions that you guys may have.
Okay.
You didn't say anything about, I provided the council with all of the list of people that did follow.
Yeah, so if you have any emails that we're receiving today, and also a list of some they're verbal in your, on your desk, so that's also in the public record for the public hearing. Okay, so with that, um, on the agenda is ordinance number ten-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance stopping the code of ordinance as a city in Nevada, twenty-twenty-one, so we'll leave that open for council's wishes.
With the mayor's advice, and hold a workshop, and take more input, take some time. Process this more based on certainly the input from this evening, and
I think we've.
I think some outside, what I heard, some of the partners in this effort we could invite in too, so.
Yeah, I think we've gotten a lot of good information tonight that we should, should definitely consider before we vote on it, as it's written especially.
One other thing too, is I do think we need to have these fees in place, or at least starting fees, before we even approve any of this stuff. Because I wanna prove it, and then have it turn around, we're charging five hundred dollars or whatever for an inspection, so I'd like to see all that before we even approve anything.
Is there any consensus to your work session?
Yeah.
Or multiple sessions, depending on what needs to be done?
Do you have for all of this, this whole packet, or just a handful of brand-new chapters that are new to everybody? Like grammatical errors, I have no problem approving grammatical errors tonight, but when we talk about property maintenance and the, uh, the, the, what, the.
Parklets.
Parking. Parklets.
Yeah.
And there's another one, the food trucks, the stuff that's all brand-new.
Yeah.
That I would want separate. I don't know if we can separate that stuff and prove medical terms, but, or we push the whole thing.
I think it would be a challenge to, to sit here right now and go through which ones are which. Um, I think it's possible if we wait till the next meeting to perhaps do that for the actual the, the needy parts of it.
Get through as a group, kind of, maybe not as one package, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and then.
Matter of me, I'm gone after tonight, so.
Yeah, I think it's po- I think it's possible to do what you're asking, I think it'd be challenging to do it this evening.
Well, I don't think there's anything that's that urgent on here that we have to pass anything tonight, so.
No, a lot of those words have been a long time.
Yeah, I think there's, and I think there's some stuff that concerns me that I read it, that's, nobody even mentioned some other things that we talked about, the truck thing, and that maybe we need to work through this a little bit before we attempt to pass anything.
Well, just so everybody knows, council especially, but everyone out here, like, how those, these changes came to be, it's kind of been a running list. Even prior to Jordan being here, the former administrator had a list, and these were just kind of the things that continually got brought up that needed to be changed, and so, um, Jordan has been working through getting, getting them all in place and, and some language there, and and so that's why we're sitting here with multiple proposed revisions as opposed to just one, um, that we normally see, so.
And we do work sessions too, I think it'd be important not just to have us involved, but have members of the community who this is going to affect both owners and tenants as well, I think we need both sides on that, so that everybody's on the same page. And then everybody has ownership as well of the end product, so.
I think Eric's point was really well-taken by me, which is having those stakeholders too. The bank, the assessor, the insurance agent involved in this too, in the discussion. So, along with the tenant and the landlord.
So could this be clustered up in a little, little bit more chugh pieces then, instead of a big blanket, yes or no, is that kind of what we're discussing right now?
Yeah, kind of strategy going forward. I, I think it certainly could be broken up into separate ordinances for the different sections, and then one that has all the, what Luke was talking about, all the smaller changes.
Yeah, I think that would be good to have, like, all the grammatical ones like Luke was referring to in their own thing, so we could just pass that easy, and that's not controversial at all, and work through the other things.
It probably will make sense to do work session, at least specific to rental codes by itself, and maybe the other changes in a second one, so we'll probably have more than one just based on time alone, so we'll have to get that scheduled, but we'll make sure, and I'm sure Miley's is listening, we'll make sure she gets it out and promoted when those are going to be, so anyone interested can come to those.
What kind of motion would be helpful right now?
You need?
You don't need, you don't need a motion, no action, we're just directing it to get a work session scheduled. That sounds great, thank you.
Okay.
We have a timeline of when that work session may happen, we're talking weeks, months.
After the holidays, it don't, not really say this is, is, um, January, but we'll have to see what council's schedule is going to look like. and when we can have options to put those. So my guess is it'll probably take us in the June and February to do those. And then maybe towards the end of February or March is when the readings would be ready to go. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I think we'll probably have at least one or two work sessions. And it would be wise to probably break up the work sessions for codes because there is a lot in the rental code. So we'll be breaking that up and discussing it.
And what'll make all that go better is
Sounds like parking needs its own set aside too. I mean, that would give us an opportunity to consider parking more globally in terms of the improvements on Main Street and all this, all of that stuff.
And what'll make all that go smoother is council, take questions, feedback, comments, changes you have or you have received from people. Also for the public, we'd ask you to do the same. Because if we can get that ahead of time, we can consider some of that and have kind of a plan before those work sessions to kind of make those go a little bit more smoother if we have comment collected beforehand. Okay. Into the consent agenda, any added may be removed for separate consideration.
Will be approved. Second.
Will contain any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Thanks, that is approved. Takes us to appointments. There's an appointment for Chris Corbin to the Historic Preservation Commission of the term expired 6/30 of 2024. We have a couple of vacancies on historic preservation. Another one that's probably going to be upcoming. And obviously Chris is the name. I think most of you know that would be a good fit for that commission. Luke and Dane, any discussion on that? Seeing none, council please vote. Just time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. So we will move into that. And Mr. Ray Beatty has been very patient here waiting for his turn. So we'll have Ray Reynolds come up and talk about Mr. Beatty.
Thank you, Ray Reynolds, Fire Chief. Appreciate everybody sticking around for the good news of this. I wanted to comment on Ray Beatty. He's been with the Fire Department for a few years. He's oversaw the EMS program when I came into the department nearly eight years ago. Ray is a paramedic for our department. He's the lead paramedic and he, he keeps the wheels turning on our EMS program. Overing supplies, we run over 520 medical calls a year at various levels from EMT to paramedic level. And it takes quite a bit to stay in compliance with the state of Iowa to run an EMS program. We recently had a health inspection from the Iowa Department of Public Health and that resulted in zero deficiencies for our medical program. And this was significant because it's the first one that we've done at the paramedic level. Things like monitoring the temperature of the compartment space, decontaminating equipment during the inspection. There are 16 stages that they look at. I thought it was interesting that they asked us to open an ID bag and pull out a 24 gauge ID catheter to look at the expiration date on that. Obviously, we don't use a 24 gauge catheter very often. It's very small and I think that's why they did it. So I, I think the attention to detail is probably the greatest feat of accomplishment when it comes to an EMS program. So I'd like to read this letter of commendation and present the plaque to Ray, if you don't mind, sir. To paramedic Ray Beatty, you are hereby the department's letter of commendation for your exemplary service to the city of Nevada. Your dedication to the EMS program of the Nevada Fire Department is second to none. This kind of dedication reflects favorably upon you as a volunteer, part-time employee for the fire department. On December 2nd, you participated in an Iowa Department of Public Health EMS license inspection. The inspection focused on 16 areas of the department's emergency medical services program. The fire department did not have a single deficiency during this inspection. While the inspection is one component of a successful program, you spent months tracking provider documents, equipment and vehicle logs to assure the city was ready. This is dedication. The results speak for themselves. You're a future contributor as to why the license inspection was flawless. Your attention to detail is impeccable. This letter of commendation will be a permanent part of your employment file for the city of Grand. Job well done. And so Ray, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward.
Okay, and next we have some OSA office. Well, she's going to do mine and then I'm Gotcha.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United, of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
Discharge all duties of the office of mayor
Discharge all duties of the office of mayor
For the city of Nevada, Iowa
Of the city of Nevada, Iowa
As now or hereafter required by law
As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you very much. Now I'm going to add, I'll tell you my name, I'll tell you my number, Anderson. New company number six, ready to have fun? I state your name.
I, I
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member
For the city of Nevada, Iowa
For the city of Nevada, Iowa
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter.
Brian, is that somebody tagged you? It's on your paper.
Yeah, I just got to read that.
Okay, that continues on in the public forum. Is there any here to speak in the public forum that are on topics of business other than this on the agenda? Seeing none, you will close up the form, which moves us into bold business. Approved here on West Number Six for the wastewater treatment facility project phase two amount of $731,644.15. Will be approved. Jason and Luke, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That's approved. Takes us to new business, new business resolution number 36, 2021, 2022. Resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, an estimate of cost for the 2022 street improvement project and the taking of bids therefore.
Second.
Sandy and Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. And that is approved. Takes us to new business, be approved purchase of portable radios for the street and water department.
Will be approved.
Brian and Luke, any discussion?
I just have one question. It talks about seven portable radios, but then when they list it out in the second paragraph, there's, looks like there's only six spoken about. B from water treatment, one through administration, one public works, and an extra radio. That's only six.
I think we forgot the water.
There's three for water. Oh, I just
I think you forgot water.
Okay. So the numbers all reflect seven, right? Yes.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. It didn't work? Okay. And that is approved. Takes us to item, let's see, item C. Resolution number 37, 2021, 2022. Resolution to approve memorandum of agreement with the Iowa statewide Intermodal Communications System Board to radio communications for public works. Will be approved?
Second.
Jason and Brian, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. I think that is approved. Takes us to item D, approve new Class B liquor license, Class B native wine permit for farmhouse catering, LC, DBA, cozy home and table, 1005 Sixth Street, effective December 13th, 2021. Move to approve?
Second.
Dane, Sandy, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Takes us into report, starting with city administrator.
First off, I want to say thank you to Henry and Main Street Promotions because they put on a great event this last weekend and really did turnout and I can't wait to see it next year again. So thanks to Park and Rec, Public Works and Public Safety, Fire for the chili feed, it was amazing. And you guys did a great job, so thank you for, for that. Some of the meetings that I've been part of the last couple of weeks are the Alumni Association, planning the alumni event for this next upcoming year, the inner city visit, a regroup over discussion of some of the cool things that we'd like to initiate that we saw in Osage. Our NEDC meeting, another pizza pie losing meeting, which will have more of those to come. Story, Story County Conditional Use Permit meeting to, for our trunk sewer line and then our street improvements for 2022 as well. So that's all I have for right now. Unless you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, moving on for reports. For my report, I think the most exciting one that I emailed you all about was the CAT grant. So that was in addition to, previously we got $25,000 for the field house from the Story County Community Foundation. Then through the state of Iowa, Community Attraction and Tourism Grant, we got forward to $24,000. So we definitely are grateful to have that. It was a little bit of a disjointed process and I'll be happy to brief any of you on at another time. But glad we're on the other side of it, that's for sure. So that, where that loses us is out of the 7 million official goal, we're at 6.8. So really, really close. So the foundation has put together a campaign to look for 200 families to pledge $200 a year for five years. Easy math, that gets that the 200. So trying to break it down to something that folks understand and is fairly tangible for a lot in the community. They've been asking for ways that they can be part of it as well. So optimistic that, that we're going to get that. The goal is to do that through the rest of the month. There'll be a callathon in the beginning of January to, to make some calls to get the rest of that. And then hopefully you'll have bid documents in front of you in January. So otherwise, something else that I'm super excited about, but I'm not going to steal Barb's thunder because she kind of set it up. But I'll let her talk about the mental health meeting we had last week and kind of what our plans are going from there.
Oh, we were, we were approached by Tracy Ingsstrom to start to think about how the community could help everyone's well-being, especially in this post-COVID time where everything is kind of confusing, but it's starting to kind of add up. And she's, she does, she's a social worker. She has private practice. She's with kids at school. She sees households and, and adults as well. But what came out of the group, so we gathered Mayor Jordan and the social workers from schools with Gint was not able to be with us, but Jody Heron was. We got the touch of Main Street because if we're going to do something, we want to do it fun and big. And so we've kind of set aside February for well-being in Nevada. And so we're talking about things that, that as I understand it, there are specific things that communities can do to help everyone's mental health and that sense of well-being, that they, they belong. And, and so it's, it's fun things like, you know, being really active in community, volunteering, doing some of those kinds of things, creative things. And then just really putting on, on, kind of on a plate so folks can see it, all the help that's available in the community in this, in the, in the Story County area. So the folks don't have to feel like they're alone in the middle of the darkest, coldest part of winter in Iowa. So someday Main Street, you know, in a year or two, some big February weekend like they do up north, you know? We're, we're on it. So look for things in February. We're just going to kind of take a week at a time. Hopefully we get a chance to take advantage of some free things. We're, we're counting on enough, enough weather that we can have the new ice skating rink in place so folks can skate in February and sled and do some of those other things, but not that, you know, forty below zero thing we had last year for 10 consecutive days. So please watch for things that are happening. We'll take care of the community in one way in, in January with the mayor's proclamation and fill the foyer and then we'll just try to, try to, try to see if we can, to bring this community together in a way that can help folks in the darkest, coldest part of our lives, both in the winter and this post-COVID time. So, thanks.
Thanks Barb. And I think it's a natural transition from fill the foyer, taking care of physical needs to then going into February. So the, the group talked about swinging in the four themed weeks with more create fun and tools to talk about the resources we have. So it's kind of the direction we're going.
Find your ice skates, find your sleds.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have more to come. Should we start the other council reports?
I want to echo what Jordan said, but I also want to specifically mention Marla, Les and Roz and Christie for the work they did on the committee planning the Main Street Christmas. That was such a cool thing to be a part of. And obviously I was, was in charge of the race early out of the afternoon. But then after that, I had this rare opportunity where I wasn't in charge of anything and I got to take it in as, as a consumer and as a parent. And that was just so much fun going all the way up. And I feel like in the past, we've had a hard time getting things north of Lincoln Way. And I think this time that was actually achieved and I think that was awesome. But it was just so cool going up and down the street and seeing all the businesses having people in them and everyone having a good time. And, you know, it was just a great day for our community. So I just want to make sure those three got mentioned by name because they put a lot of time and effort into that.
A lot easier to cross Lincoln Way too, though.
It is true.
Other council reports?
We had coffee with the council on Saturday, Jordan and Henry and I. We had a pretty good turnout with everything going on downtown. A lot of people were in through the coffee shop. I don't know that we talked about anything specific. Did we, Jordan, just people hanging out and asking a few questions? We'd talk, I think, about the streets as much as anything, the street department, rolling equipment, things like that. But pretty good turnout. I think it was the last one for the year. I think we're going to try to involve maybe the police department next year. Maybe have one of the representatives come every time we do it if we can. I think there's some interest in a few guys I've asked, so I think that'll be helpful. We'll just see what happens after the holidays.
Awesome, thanks Brian. Awesome. Thanks, Brian.
Well, considering this is Luke's last meeting, I want to thank him. I appreciate sitting by you for the last four years. I mean, we don't agree a lot.
He's laughed at that.
But I was meeting friends outside of here and I appreciate your friendship more than anything else. So thank you and look forward to continuing that friendship outside here. Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, I would, I would go ahead and echo that. We had an opportunity to have the reception before the council meeting and I know many of you were able to come in. And before you, we make sure you grab some cookies and those so the rest of us don't have to do it. But we certainly appreciate Luke's service on the council the last four years. An important perspective and important voice. And I told him before, he's helped me to be a better mayor and he's helped us be a better city. So we appreciate all the time he's put in.
The mayor bought me a nice little Bob Ross Christmas ornament. Nobody knows it's going to be falling near the top of the tree, so. I, I want to, I, I don't know if you want to talk to the rest of the folks, but I want to thank first and foremost the department heads sitting in the back. They are the backbone of this town and they, they put in so much hard work to make this all happen. We have some of the hardest working and innovative and forward-thinking leaders in our community just within the ranks of our own employee group. And it's not so much how much you mean to this community. And I thank you all for your hard work, as well as your time and commitment to answering my many mundane questions that take you away from your hard work and your innovation. So thank you all in the back row for, for everything that you do. I want to thank the mayor and the six councilmembers I've had a chance to serve with, the five you're here tonight, and Jim Walker as well. I, I've said many times, I don't think I could handpick a better group of people to work with. And, and I mean that very much. I look forward to working with you all in the future because you're not going to get rid of me that easily. You might get rid of me on Monday nights.
Don't let it keep your shirts.
We have a great community, we're very supportive of each other. And I think everyone that comes to this point in their term wants to, uh, uh, see that the, the town's in a better place than it was when they started. And I feel like I can go away saying that that's true, which isn't to say I couldn't have come up with some more things I wanted to do in another four years. But I think it's important that people in our position know that, that our place here is temporary. And it's important for us to ensure there's a steady flow of fresh and diverse ideas and perspective that always come in, which I think we have in Mr. Skaggs. And it's a good addition to our, to our council as well. I think it's vital for this leadership team, like any other really, to embrace and seek out those fresh ideas and different perspectives. Too often you can fall on a comfortable place of seeking the opinions of those which, who we know will go along with our ideas exclusively, or it can be easy to fill a room full of people you agree with to avoid conflict. But it's incumbent on us as leaders to work through our own discomfort and embrace diversity of opinion and ideas to better serve all aspects of our community. I, I challenge all of you, not just the, the seven of us elected up here, but everybody in the community to go out and push your own personal thresholds to get to know all of the different people we share this community with. My outlook and point of view of Nevada changed a little bit every time I knocked on a person's door, which was six hundred and forty doors every year until COVID hit. And it's by far the most rewarding and I owe me experience of my four years, which is to not say that I haven't enjoyed my time on Monday nights with you. But sitting on people's doorsteps has been, and talking with them has been by far the best part of this job. So find your own ways of pushing your own envelope to meet new people, gain different experiences, and learn more about that great, this great town. I, I can assure you, you will not be disappointed. It, it has been an absolute honor to sit here. I'm glad all of you came to say goodbye. It's been. And the two people I reached out to before I decided to run, other than my wife, are here tonight. Jane Heinz and Brian Hanson were the two people I reached out to, to figure out what I was getting myself into and hoping that they would talk me out of it and they did not. So it's been an honor to put to work with all of you over the last four years and it, it's been an amazing experience. So thank you all. It's been, it's been a lot of fun.
Thank you, Luke. Now we'll go back to staff reports and have Jeremy head up to the mic. Well, never mind, I'm having trouble seeing everybody in the back, so. Not used to so many people. Yeah, Joe, do you have anything to do with it?
You all know we got the, the signs downtown completed. Uh, I think we're going to work on some, some other handicap signs. We had Tappo up the other, the other day fixing issues on the, on the blinky signs. Snow removal we had that Saturday, first time it was fun. Getting the street sweeper back out this week since the nice weather and just kind of plugging away at everything. Any questions?
Thank you. Now Jeremy. Council anything for Jeremy?
I have a question.
Director Reynolds.
I just, again, wanted to thank Ron Beatty for his effort and stuff. Friday night rain and one of my other paramedics, Caleb and Fred Melvin, EMT, helped deliver a baby, so. That was cool. We end the year, we just had seven hundred and twelve calls. So I would anticipate my year's end will break last year's record of seven hundred and twenty. So we're on track to have probably close to seven hundred and fifty calls. So that's pretty significant for a volunteer department and says a lot. We currently have forty-nine members. We have thirty-two percent are female. So we're definitely doing some good things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Um, we're closing, we're doing some closing part of the construction. So I'll be doing my final walkthrough mail of little things that need to be fixed around Lincoln Way, Sixth Street, stuff like that. I'd like to reach out to all the landlords that are here. I appreciate you guys echoing your concerns. With that being said, please feel free to email me. It's not something that I'm going to take lightly because this does affect not only your tenants, but you guys. And you are providing a great service to this community. Not only will you read this code thinking that we're coming out for you guys, right? It's something that can be manipulated to work for everyone. And manipulated probably isn't the best word, but that's the biggest one I could think of. So I think you know where I'm going with that. I really do encourage all of you to reach out to me. Really, you know me personally and if you're better calling me or reaching out through email is fine as well. So as far as the couple of concerns about the parking, via Zoom, please reach out to me again. It wasn't easy to hear you. I've taken notes back there. I think I understand where the majority of your concern is with that, but please reach out to me via email or come in and we can have a meeting about it. I'm not opposed to that at all. With that being said, we still, I'm still getting a ton of permits. People are remodeling, people are improving a lot. So any questions or anything like that? Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. And thanks, Bobby.
Hello. Um, I just wanted to echo the kudos to Marlis and everybody who had a hand in Christmas on Main because we had two hundred and eighteen people in the library on Friday, or Saturday evening. And there was just a ton of excitement for families to be back in the library, both from the staff and from the patrons, which was awesome. Another exciting thing is we are kind of focusing on re-engaging the teens in the community at the library. We have a dedicated group of, like mostly middle schoolers and maybe some, some younger high school kids who are coming just because they don't have a place to be a lot of times after school. And so we're working on setting up some programming for them. In January, we'll have gaming, computers, board games, things to kind of engage them and give them something to do at the library. And it was really awesome today. I was talking to one of those teens and they just lit up and they were like, that is so cool. I've never belonged to anything like that before. And then I also had parents telling me, you know, almost tearing up at the thought that, you know, we're trying to provide something for these teenagers. So we're excited to get that going. And you'll be able to learn more about that when we debut our new website at the end of this month. So that's kind of been a, a year in the works. And since we've had so much staff turnover and, you know, different people doing different things in the pandemic, it's taken a while to get it up and running. But that will be ready by the end of December and it will include booking, digital booking for our meeting room and study rooms, which are really popular with people. We've been getting a lot of community groups in our meeting rooms. So this will be another avenue for them to schedule it and to see when it's available. And then lastly, we are hiring a part-time associate library. And now because one of our part-timers is shifting to full-time, so we're excited for that as well. Any questions on anything? Thank you.
Just a couple things to add to my report that was in your packet. I think you saw a letter in your packet from ITC. It was a press release. We've been granted $1,500 from ITC for tree plantings from the DHO. So I think all total was grants and donations this year. We've done about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty to the community to replace DHO damage. So we're pleased and grateful to them for their support. This week, staff is, we've got meal bags we're putting together. And I think I've mentioned this to you before, but we've got meal bags for families in need that will go out this week. And all of that is paid for through donations and contributions from our community. So for all those that have given, we're, we're very grateful for that. We had a meeting today with Story County. Story County is going to be implementing some aquatic code changes for us. They're the only county in the state that is doing this, so they're kind of leading the charge. So we'll have some new things to implement next year, more on a management operations side of things. But in the end, it's all meant to keep our facility safer for the public. So working through that with them. And lastly, back to trees, we're certified again as a Tree City USA for the twentieth consecutive year. So any questions? With that, have a happy and safe holiday.
Thank you. I saw Jane Kirk got talking.
If you have anything to add to my report, I'm looking forward to having officers sitting this go on his own real soon here. That'll, that'll be great and relieve some of the stress on my officers. Nick and Madison graduate Friday. Governor's going to be the keynote speaker. I've been, I've been on the ILEA board for twelve years and I never remember the governor coming in and speaking. So this will be, this will be something special. So unless you guys have any questions, so I got.
Thank you.
Doing budget meetings with the staff and department heads and working on the redissection. Thank the county for doing the math, didn't have to go in and do Ursa. And that was great of them to do that for us. I'll be taking a few days off over the holidays, so. Finally, I'll probably be checking in.
Lady?
I really don't have a whole lot to report. Try to wrap up the plan and expect for what we get streaming purpose for next year. Action that you took tonight. Since there's no second meeting this month or monthly, a project update delayed until the first council meeting in January. So the next meeting, you'll get that one. Along that line, I will be out of state all of January, February, returning in March. So I won't see you for about another three months. But Molly Manton will be attending council meetings, should be my IEDMers in the next three months. So with that, if you have any questions you might have.
That's a place one. You have to get to tell us who can find you.
He said something about beach and golf.
Aaron.
My other thing is on what I do currently. The last state of the deal on that property, if there is potential redemption happening is December twentieth. So one more week. And then hopefully we can finalize that process to get title transferred over to the city and we can finish the work that needs to be done on that property. So that is all I have for today.
Council anything, Brian?
You can invite me to when that building gets torn down. I'd really appreciate it.
I need a commander to be on fire, I don't know. I'll pay a lot of money if I have a.
February.
Marshmallows on it.
Leave those February events, right?
Anything else from council before we adjourn? I want to thank everyone here for coming and we'll see everybody after the holidays. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thanks again, Luke, and welcome, Steve.
I'm going to adjourn.
Right? Okay. Take a few seconds. I'll go to the favor.